Welcome, everybody, to the February 16th, 2017, meeting of the North Endover School Committee, broadcasting a little early at six o'clock here at the Atkinson Elementary School. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would invite everyone to stand up and please pledge allegiance to it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If people could remain standing for one more minute, a quick moment of silence, that would be great.
Yeah, we lost two longtime educators here in the North Endover Public Schools recently. The first is Jill Richards, who was a teacher at the ECC, and the other was Ginny Folds, who was the nurse at the high school. So I would ask that we just think of them for a moment, please.
Thank you. So the first order of business is public comment. Is anyone here for a public comment today? They'll be an opportunity to speak later at the end of the meeting as well. Okay, so now we want to cut right to the reason we're here at Atkinson and our student presentation.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gilligan.
Right. Thank you so much, and a big thanks to the fifth grade students and Ms. Bayless for letting us come in today. I also want to introduce, Ms. Marks is here tonight, and our reading coaches are both here, Anne and Jackie. And tonight, you're going to get a chance to see a couple of things. One is, we've talked a lot about the model classroom, but you're going to get to see Ms. Bayless using it in action. You've seen a lot of presentations on Lucy Cawkins in writing, and Ms. Bayless has worked incredibly hard with these students on narrative writing, and now they're working on informational writing. You're going to be able to see that. And also, although Atkinson School has some really large classes, like fourth grade, fifth grade at Atkinson just happened this year to be at 22 right now. So it's kind of an opportunity to see three things. One's the model classroom, one's the curriculum adoption of Lucy Cawkins, and then the third is some of the kind of work that can go on, particularly when you have a lower class size. Without further ado, Ms. Bayless.
Well, first off, good evening and welcome to my classroom. This is a fifth grade room. A few weeks ago, I shared a story with Ms. Marks about, that one of my students had written. And she was so impressed with it that she invited some more people over, and Dr. Price came over. And then before you knew it, I was presenting, we were presenting this to you guys. So that's kind of how that came about. Then I shared one story, and it kind of grew to this tonight. I'm very excited to share this with you, to present this to you. My students have worked really hard. The program that we're using is incredibly supportive for that, and I think you'll see that yourself in a moment. Our four students tonight presenting are Hannah Elzayat, Mary Ann Kinyangjuli, Melissa Almeida, and Andrew Gibson. So they'll be each speaking later on. As you know, the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program was implemented this year for the first time across the district. It was my first year using it, and as a veteran teaching teacher, who's been working here in the district for quite a while, I really found that the program shifted my teaching. The lessons were much stronger, deeper. What they were asking the kids to do were steps above what we had been doing before. So I can't say enough about how the program's really helped move all of our teaching and our work here. The kids are very much involved in the writing. They look forward to the writing class. They see themselves as writers. They are asking to share their writing all the time. When I explained to them that we were asked to do the school committee meeting, all of them in my class wanted to come and do it with you. So we were hard to pick four, but that's what we narrowed it down to, and they're eager tonight to share. But let me have one of my students tell you about it. Hannah's here, so please welcome her. She's going to talk about the writing.
So the new writing program is really great. In lower grades, we were taught that details were the most important thing, and that the more details in a story, the better it is. But with the new program, Mrs. Bayless has taught us that the heart of the story is most important. Some of the many lessons we were taught was to write like a movie camera and really paint a picture with your words. Another is to really slow down the moment for your reader and have them experience it with you, and starting with the end of your story. So here we have a story by Paris Chaguet, which is going to be read by Mrs. Bayless.
Paris wrote a story where she almost drowned. And she was eight years old at the time, swimming in a swimming pool, and she had this experience that she wanted to share. And when she first wrote the story, it was very much just sequentially what happened. Through lessons of slowing it down and pretending you have a movie camera, this is just a part of what her story became, and it's pretty powerful, and I'd like to share that with you. "As the water started to get heavier and heavier and heavier, my legs lost control of speed, and it felt like the water was trying to wrestle me down to the seafloor, like the Titanic. I sank deeper and deeper and deeper. Please don't die, please don't die, please don't die," I thought. I was wondering about afterlife and how it would be different from real life, but unfortunately, I don't know what it is like. What they don't tell you about almost drowning is that your legs lose so much feeling inside, that your legs either are scared to death, or they're numb. It felt peaceful for a moment. I was confused about how it felt so peaceful. It felt warm and comfortable. When the bubbles touched me, it felt like if someone were to tickle you the lightest that they could. It still wouldn't bother me. I finally came to realize it was quiet. It was so quiet that I could actually hear myself think for once. It was so quiet that it was quieter than an awkward moment. So Paris wrote this story, and obviously, we know she survived this. The lifeguard jumped in and pulled her up. But just the idea that a 10-year-old student writer can write something like this, really slowing it down, making us feel that moment, it was pretty powerful, pretty incredible to see this.
So I also wrote a story. It was about how I used to live in Egypt, and my dad traveled here and stayed here for a few years, and we joined him on later. And so this is about when we were looking for him at the airport. "Mom, is this where we'll find Dad?" I asked. Yes, she said in a whisper. Before she even finished her sentence, I was off, my eyes darting back and forth. I stood on my tiptoes as high as I could. I craned my neck until I ached. The huge room was swarming with people, and to me, a five-year-old girl, it seemed like a million, reuniting with their families. It made me happy to see all those smiles and everybody with their families. That reminded me of mine. I scanned the airport, looking for that one special face, the one that I hadn't seen in so long, my dad. So as you can see, around the classroom, we have many posters displaying some of the lessons we have taken in writing. And I am positive that if you ask all fifth grade, they can all agree that our writing has gotten a lot better this year. And we've gotten a lot more done since we've been typing. Speaking of typing, typing is a neater and faster way for us to write. It also encourages us to add more, since we don't have to use a pencil, and it like, it tires us out. We just want to take as many shortcuts as possible to finish. Especially when you're revising, it's a lot neater and easier to read. Here's a sample of revision by Michael Francis. And here are all the times he's worked on it, and this is his first draft. This is his final draft, and still all the times he's worked on it, and as you can see, there's a big difference. The new writing program has also opened us up to each other. Some of us have known each other for many years, and this program has encouraged us to write about more personal topics. And we've learned a lot about each other just from those topics that we've never knew about. Some of us have never thought about being a writer, but after this program, some of us are actually considering that as a career, and maybe one of us will become a famous author when we grow up.
See why I'm so proud of them. Technology is our next topic we wanted to address, and I kind of chuckle when I think about how far we've come with technology. It's embedded in our classrooms now so much that I actually think the kids are starting to take it for granted. It's almost like, and taking it for granted is a good thing, in a way, because that means it's embedded, it's important, it's available. It's almost like the technology is like a dictionary on the shelf. That's how much they expect it to be there. We didn't get there the easy way, though. It's just happened most this year, the last couple of years. One of the pieces that we have now is the mounted projector. We also have over here a document camera, and we have over here our beloved cart of Chromebooks. We share those with other classes on the floor, which can be a little tricky sometimes, but we are able to get on them at least several times a week, if not every single day. And that's really important. Tonight, I want to express thanks to our PTO for all the fundraising they did to bring this into our classrooms. Classrooms, grades three to 12, I believe, across the district are pretty much set up like this. And the PTO fundraising and everything that went behind that, we so appreciate that. I also want to thank Mike Grant and Kathy Detroit for our building, for bringing this in and supporting us and learning how to use it. And lastly, I want to thank the school committee, Dr. Price, Mr. Landry, all those people that have worked so hard to put technology at the top of the list. It's made a huge difference for us teachers. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to two of our students who are going to talk about how it's impacted their learning. Mary Ann and Melissa are going to speak to you now.
The technology in the room has helped our class learn in a faster and easier way. For example, the Chromebooks, the document camera, and the ceiling projector all make learning simple.
The projector mounted on the ceiling was a big help in the class, because it's much easier to work with. Before having the projector on the ceiling, it took a long time to set up. Last year, we had to borrow speakers from other teachers, because it was hard to hear. But this year, there were no problems with the projector.
People made shadows with their hands that were distracting and irritating, but now there is no struggle, and it is as easy as a click of a button to set up.
The document camera is really cool, in my opinion. It helps us review worksheets with the whole class, which makes it much easier for the teacher to teach. The camera can zoom in to see things better, too. It's also very clear and not hard to see the sheet that is being shown.
But the Chromebooks are what has really made the biggest difference. These are what helps us learn the most in class.
We can easily search things up, not needing to flip through books to find information. In third grade, we rarely use the Chromebooks or had to beg our teachers to use them.
Google Classroom helps a lot, either for taking a test or typing an essay.
Ms. Bayless doesn't have to stay upgrading papers, but with taking a test on Google Classroom, it won't take us long. It's organized, and the teacher can access our writing pieces without us having to be interrupted.
It's much easier to edit our writing pieces, and we can put in pictures from the internet instead of just drawing them on paper.
Last year in fourth grade, we would use pens to revise our writing. It would look messy and hard to read. But now, this year, the Chromebooks are much more efficient. Typing is way easier than writing by hand, mostly for people who have really bad handwriting.
We go on math websites, which is not only just like doing it on regular paper, but saves a lot of trees, too.
Also, we will use technology in the future a lot, so it's good that we have the Chromebooks to get used to. Technology in the classroom really helps us learn better and make things easier.
Just to kind of show a couple of things that they were talking about, I can quickly switch, as a classroom teacher, from one piece to another. So I just want to show you a video using the projector and the speakers to show you how easy it is.
But when powerful earthquakes do happen in places where people live and work, they can cause major damage.
At any point, I could stop it, talk to the class, show a little more, talk to the class. So this piece of it has been amazing, because before this, I'd have a table in the middle of the classroom. I'd have the projector on there. I'd have speakers to set up. Sometimes, the computer would talk to the projector. Some of you in the business world probably know exactly what I'm talking about, how hard that can be. So this has totally eliminated that. It's been incredibly wonderful. The other piece that's been great is the document camera. I'll put you there, but I have over here just a magazine that I'm projecting on the screen. Not sure why it's doing that, but this, again, I can take something that I want to show the students, show it up here to everybody. They're able to see it, and I can switch back and forth to different pages as well. Our final topic tonight is one that's probably been discussed many, many times. You're probably not going to hear anything new tonight that you haven't thought about or heard before, but I think it's really powerful hearing it from a student's perspective. In my opinion, probably one of the things that most impacts student learning is that class size. I know that implementing this writing program would not have been successful, as successful as it has been, if I had a class of 26, 28, or 30 kids. It's just that much more difficult to get around to everybody, to comment on papers in a timely manner, to grade papers, as the kids were talking about, to proactively talk to parents. Just with that many more kids, all those things become very difficult. We're hoping that you continue to prioritize lowering class sizes. Having 28, 29 in a classroom, it should just be totally unacceptable. If you're leaving tonight, poke your head into one of our fourth grade rooms down the hallway. You see, it's just wall-to-wall desks. Teachers can't get around. It's just so many things. I've been lucky this year. I only have 22. Andrew is going to speak to that and tell you some of the pluses for him as a student, why having that low class size has really helped.
Right now, our class size is a small size, but it's a very good size, because our teacher can learn our names quicker and get to know us better for who we are. And for new students, learning our names is 10 times easier than having six extra students. It's also more spacious and comfortable in our class. Because there's less desks, our teacher can get around quicker and give attention to kids that are struggling and need it, or for kids that need challenges, and they can receive their challenges. Behavior is way better than having six extra students, because there's not a lot of kids that need to be calmed down. Everybody's pretty well relaxed, and nobody's really making any, like, ruckus or anything. In preparation for the speech, I observed a very large class of 28 students while they were working. It was very noisy, and there was a lot of desks everywhere, so it was pretty hard to get around. But our teacher, well, the teacher in the fourth grade class didn't really notice lots of kids making mistakes. There were some people that were hiding behind desks, and there was other kids that were talking and chatting while they weren't supposed to. I think that if that teacher had less students, then it would be so much more easier for her. Also, in our class, everybody's calm, everybody follows the raised values better, and everybody can make friends pretty easy, especially for new children. It starts to feel like a second family for some people, and kids start to enjoy coming to school, because they can get away from any problems that they have at home, and things are just a lot easier for them. And that's just my view on our class size.
We started tonight with the writing program and some strong writing from our students, and we're going to end our program that way as well. Mary Ann has written a story, and she's going to pull up real close here and read to you a story that she wrote called "Sweet Nancy." Great story.
Every single morning, my neighbor Nancy would come out on her porch and say goodbye to me right before I left for school. But if she did forget, she would come over after school and apologize. I would say, "It's okay. You don't have to be sorry," and smile at her. Nancy was kind of old and always had to wear this medical thing around her chest. Nancy was very active. She would walk around the whole heritage green every morning like she was the happiest lady you've ever seen. Then, one day, Nancy didn't come out on her porch and say goodbye to me. I just thought maybe she overslept. Once I got home, I waited and waited for her to show up, but she didn't. I was very confused why, but I just thought maybe she was at her family's house or something. Later on that day, my aunt and I went over to her house to ask if she was doing laundry, because someone's clothes were in the laundry machine. When my aunt knocked on the door, nobody answered. "Go check if her car is here," my aunt asked me. I ran outside to check if her car was there, and it was. "It's here," I said, with a confused face crept upon me and my aunt's face. We immediately went back to my place and called Nancy's sister. My aunt and Nancy's sister were friends. They knew each other well. As soon as Nancy's sister came, as soon as Nancy's sister Lily came over, she knew something was wrong. Lily banged so hard on the door that my legs and hand, that my hand and legs were vibrating. "What's going on?" I asked her, holding back my tears like I knew something was wrong. My aunt said, "I'm going to call an ambulance." My aunt went back into my house to get the phone, while me and Lily waited to see if Nancy would answer the door. Once the ambulance came, my aunt told me to go inside. I wanted so badly to watch and see what was going on, but I had to go in. I could tell something serious was going to happen. I could hear the firefighters trying to break in the house. I was so scared for her life. My heart felt so scared, like a baby that was left home alone. Finally, when my aunt came inside, she said, "I've got to go to the hospital. Nancy's not waking up." Her voice was sad but soft. "Can I come, please?" I said in a blurry voice, trying so hard not to cry. "No, sorry. This is for adults. I'll be back later," my aunt said, as she was about to head out the door. I went to my room and cried. I cried until I eventually fell asleep. The next morning, I woke up to the sound of my aunt slowly and quietly crying. When I walked into her room, she stopped crying and wiped her tears. "Good morning," I said softly. She greeted me in a blurry voice, and she said, "I have bad news." Time froze. I just remembered what happened yesterday. I didn't want to hear bad news, only good. I felt like I stood there saying nothing for 10 minutes, but it was only 30 seconds. In my head, all I was thinking was, "No, please don't be something very, very serious, and why would this happen to Nancy?" Time resumed, while my aunt said, "Mary Ann." I startled and said, "Um, yeah." She explained to me that Nancy didn't take her health pills that morning. Then, when she slept, she didn't wake back up. She died in her sleep. I cried and cried all day long, thinking about how I never knew Nancy's day, Nancy's last day with me would be only having a small talk with her before she left, with her before she went back to her home, how I didn't even get to say a proper goodbye. As I told my uncle and grandma the news, once they got home from work, my grandmother kept saying, "Oh, my God, oh, my God," over and over again. My uncle just listened with his jaw wide open. That night, I had a dream. The dream was that Nancy was giving me a big fat hug, then she disappeared. Then, I woke up, having a tear run down my face, down, down, down it went. What they never tell you is that, what they never tell you is that you never know when your last day will be with someone special.
So that concludes our presentation. Thank you, guys, for inviting us, for having us. I'm so proud of these four. They did an awesome job, and thank you. We welcome any questions if you have any.
Yeah, they'll take some questions?
Sure.
Fantastic. From the board? Sure. So first of all, thank you very much for spending extra time tonight in school. For me, this is the most rewarding evening I've ever had on the school committee, where we see the culmination of the work of getting technology in with Mr. Grant's help and with the PTAs and PTOs, and seeing the curriculum changes that Dr. Price and others have brought to this community. So I first want to tell you, guys, this has been very, very important to me, seeing what we've been working so hard for, for year after year, come to fruition. So thank you for allowing us to participate in that tonight. And again, Ms. Bayless, thank you for bringing us into your classroom. This has been very instructional.
I just, quickly, I'll echo Mr. Grant's comments. I mean, I think it's really difficult for a lot of students to get up and speak, sometimes in front of just your friends in your class. But you guys are here tonight, Thursday night, on camera. Everybody's watching. You guys were amazing. Fantastic job. Your writing was excellent. Really, really proud of you guys. So thank you. Great job.
Ms. Bayless?
I want to tell you that I would like to come into your classroom every day and have you read stories to me, that was simply spectacular, really beautifully done. And you, I'm sure, there are going to be writers among you that we are going to buy books from someday.
I just want to say that you all spoke and wrote, as well as many adults do. So you've put a lot of us in the shade in this presentation and in your writing, so congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, I would say, you know, first of all, Paris, that was a great, great story. I can remember falling to the ice as a young kid and feeling that same exact way about my legs feeling like that. So I could definitely, unfortunately, reflect on memories. But that was really powerful. And also, I don't know, was that a Google ad? Was that a paid promo for Google? Yeah, I don't know what that was, but that was pretty impressive. And Andrew, we are working on that class size. This committee, under Superintendent Price's leadership, has made reducing class size, not just in this school, but all the elementary schools, our top priority. And hopefully, when we get to town meeting in May, we will address that. So you're spot on.
We might have to have Andrew come speak for us.
Yes. Maybe we should speak at town meeting. We did that. But really, and thank you for having us. This is great.
Can I ask them a question? So as you guys think you're fifth grade now, right, so you're about to head to middle school. Don't get nervous. It's going to be fine. But as you think about your writing this year, can you think of like one thing that each of you can think of that it's like how you've changed as a writer? Just like one thing that you say, "You know what? I'm different now than I was in September as a writer." Go ahead.
Well, because now, every story that I write, it really has a heart to it, and it has like a reason for it to be written, not really just a story just to be told. It's like, it has a, it has a reason.
Awesome.
It's more emotional, and there's like more voice in it than what we probably have ever done this year. And I feel like in middle school, it would probably get even better.
This year, we learned more of like slowing it down, like finding the heart, the concept.
I learned that you have to like paint a picture in your mind about how it happened, and then you write it down on paper.
Did you guys like it when Jacqueline Witten came? Yeah. Did anyone, any comments about that, when you went to see her at the high school? Was it cool seeing her?
Yeah, that was awesome. That was really cool to actually meet everyone. I figured that was like, that thing was, had amazing looks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take about five, 10 minutes recess, so we can reconfigure this, but thank you, guys, for coming tonight.
Thanks, guys.
We have a regular student meeting. If you can stay at your own stay, but...
Okay, we're back in session now. The next order of business is student presentation. Cole, Courtney, and Cole. Cole, welcome back. Good to see you.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
We're well.
So I would just say, as the vacation gets closer, since we've had a lot of snow days and delays, it's been a little hectic with tests getting reshuffled around and stuff like that. But a lot of people are having their final test before vacation. I know I have a few tomorrow. And then people are getting ready to go on vacation. People aren't going to be in school tomorrow and that stuff. But also, one of the new things that's happening in our school is, right now, the principal is redesigning the cellphone policy within the school. I, myself, have been working with her as a part of student council. And I know the E-Board is more focused on it than the regular council, and those are like the president of the council, et cetera. And they're trying to get an acronym clear to fit the cellphone policy that they want to reshape, because they feel like the one in the student handbook is outdated. And then I believe they just had a meeting yesterday or two days ago to finalize it, but they haven't come out with anything yet. I'll probably find out next Monday at the student council meeting. And then in addition to that, DECA, people are getting ready for DECA States, which is in, I think, two weeks after vacation. As well as that, the, I think, half of the junior class is going to Washington, DC, as a part of the AmTHOT or AP US History trip, and they're going to have a lot of fun there. And then, do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, also Derek Dubois is doing a magic show to raise money. Oh, sorry. Derek Dubois is also doing a magic show. It was today at the North Endover High School to raise money for DECA. Also with vacation, I feel like we've been on like a three-week vacation already, due to all, yep, due to all the snow days and all the delays. But I'm grateful for it, you know, those unfinished essays.
You will in June.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have to worry about it. Also, the Drama Guild has successfully wrapped up the Grease shows. By successful, I mean, it was the biggest crowd they've seen in years. They've also just finished their fundraiser for, what was it called, Almost Maine, Almost Maine, which is a series of love stories set in Almost Maine, a place called Almost Maine, where they made six hundred dollars, and all those proceeds will go to their spring show, Macbeth. Also, they're rehearsing for the Drama Fest, which will be taking place in North, at the Andover High School, March fourth, but there'll also be a show, free showcase at the North Andover High School on March third. And senior info sessions with their parents for the scholarships are also tomorrow at the North Andover High School, Room ten sixty-four, during all three lunches. Um, the scholarship info session for teach, for parents and their students.
Quick question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, absolutely.
So, we, we were talking a little bit after the, um, after the fifth grade presentation. What's your impression of what you saw this evening, in terms of technology and, and the writing?
During the break, Cole and I were talking just about, like, how much, like, how we see them improve so much, and we were just like, we don't even write that well, even at this level. We can't even draw as well as these pictures right here.
Amazing, thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other question on the board?
I actually have one other question. I'm wondering how I know that all the students are submitting, um, other than seniors are putting in their courses for next year. Right now, they're due tomorrow. How does it feel to not be putting in a course or a course list?
I actually feel really sad about it. I loved picking out different classes to take, and I'm seeing, like, my sister choosing between environmental or geology. I'm just like, take all of them, like, take all the classes you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next order of business is approval of minutes. Uh, the regular session minutes from February second. Hear any action from the board? Motion made by Ms. Maybly, second by Mr. Limpert, to approve the regular session minutes of February second, um, two thousand seventeen. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have it, that's five oh vote. Okay, next order of business, it's been a, a long time coming, is the approval and release of some executive session minutes that are going back a little bit. And, um, I'm going to take these one by one, because not everyone on the board was at these executive sessions. So, um, I think you have them in front of you, and hopefully, they're all in the same order, so I'm going to go right down the line. So, um, the executive session minutes of Jul-, and I think we had to roll call all these. Executive session minutes of, uh, July twenty-seventh.
So, move to approve executive session for July twenty-seventh, that's presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt, to approve July twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, five oh vote. Okay, uh, June second, two thousand sixteen.
A move to approve, uh, June sixteen, executive session minutes, as presented in the packet?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, five oh vote. Okay, uh, June second, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve June second, executive session minutes, as presented in the packet?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, five oh vote. Okay, uh, May twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve May twenty-sixth, executive session minutes, as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes as well, five oh vote. Okay, now, this way gets a little trickier. Uh, December third, two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, move to approve June, uh, excuse me, December third, as presented in the packet?
December third, twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, excuse me.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, yes. Ms. Maybly? Ms. 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 Maybly abstains, votes present. Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Votes yes, and Mr. Tracy votes yes, that's a four oh vote.
Four oh one.
Okay, October twenty-second, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve October twenty-second, twenty fifteen, executive session meeting minutes, as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, yes. Mr. Limpert? Sorry, Ms. Maybly. Yes, you will. And Mr. Tracy votes, uh, yes, that's a four oh vote as well. Um, okay. Yes, we know the present. Okay, October first, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve October first, executive session meeting minutes, as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, yes. Ms. Maybly? And Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, four oh, Ms. Maybly voting present. Um, September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve, uh, the executive meetings, minutes from September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Here.
Present. Mr. Mr. Yeah, Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, that's four oh, Ms. Maybly voting present. For the record, for example, people curious at home, Ms. Maybly's voting present because she wasn't actually present at these, at the ones. She wasn't elected to the board at that point. Okay, uh, so... Yeah.
Right.
I'm here today, not that.
Right. September tenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the executive session meeting minutes from September tenth, two thousand fifteen, as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, yes. Ms. Maybly? Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
And Mr. Tracy votes yes, that's four oh as well, Ms. Maybly voting present. Okay, August fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
And Mr. Chair, move to approve Aug. fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, executive session meeting minutes, as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly? Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
And Mr. Tracy votes, um, yes, so that's four oh, and Ms. Maybly voting present. Okay, um, thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve June thirty, two thousand fifteen, executive session meeting minutes, as presented, with one extension that these are referenced as executive session meeting minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Present.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
And Mr. Tracy will vote present as well, so that's a three oh vote, two abstentions.
And to be clear, the, the motion was to just identify these executive session meeting minutes?
Yep, we've got that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I see what you're saying, the title's off on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Clark. Okay, so, yeah, so, it's going to be the same on this next one, too?
Yep, yep.
Okay. June seventeenth, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chair, move to approve June seventeen, two thousand fifteen, executive session meeting minutes, with the extension of notifying that these are executive session meeting minutes, as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly? Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
And Mr. Tracy votes present as well, that's three oh, two abstentions. Okay. Now, we are at, um, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
I will move to approve the executive, uh, session minutes for May twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Limpert, a little help down there?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Mr. Limpert. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Present.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Present.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes, so that's three oh as well, with two abstentions.
Recognizing that we were not present at the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, it's A, Maybly?
You're back on.
I'm back on.
You're back on now, and, uh, BG, okay. And those were labeled correctly, okay. Uh, May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
This is actually your chair, you should call it. All right, Mr. Chair, move to approve May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, executive session meeting minutes, as presented?
Second.
Mr. Gross moves it, and Mr. McDevitt seconds it. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly?
Present.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes present. Yeah, three oh, that's right, that's right, two abstentions. Okay, moving along, almost there. April ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
So, Mr. Chair, move to approve, uh, executive session meeting minutes from April ninth, two thousand fifteen, as presented?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Gross?
Uh, yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Maybly? Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy votes yes as well. That's a four oh vote with one abstention. And, thank you very much.
That was a highlight of the meeting.
That was. I thank for your indulgence, good.
I know we've cleaned up a, a ton of these, I think we have maybe one or two, um, just as it relates to the last executive.
Yes.
Okay, just for the record, so the people know...
Yeah, I think there, there are two...
Two that are related to contract negotiations.
Correct.
Which we can't release this point.
Correct.
Yes.
And just, just for the edification of the public, the reason we had to wait on a lot of these minutes going back some time is because, um, there was ongoing, um...
Arbitration.
Arbitration, that was it, arbitration, and that way to wait till that got resolved before we could release those minutes. So, that's over now.
There you have them.
There you go, okay. Thank you for everyone's indulgence on that one. Next order of business is acceptance of donations.
Yes, so, um, the donation that we have is, um, first of all, um, unfortunately, today, because of the, uh, delayed opening, we were unable to actually officially accept this. But, um, the Middle Miss Foundation has done a buddy bench to the ECC. Um, and so, we need to accept that, uh, as part of, uh, what we've done, and it's exciting, it's over there, it's all set up. Um, so, that's our first, uh, donation. And then, our second is, um, do you take that one first? Okay, yep.
Uh, motion to accept this donation?
So, moved?
Made by Mr. Gross, seconded by...
Second.
By Ms. Maybly.
Wow, snuck in there.
Uh, discussion. I think you wanted to say, discussion.
I, I do have a question, so, um, the, the actual bench is twelve hundred dollars.
Yep.
And then, the education foundation?
That's a different...
That's a different one, okay, all right. Okay, sorry, they were just on the same page, that's what threw me, okay.
So, where does that stand as far as, um, these buddy benches, district-wide? Are they almost every school now, or?
I know, Charleston has one.
Kittredge, Charleston.
Franklin.
Franklin has one.
Does ACCC have one?
Atkinson, I don't know. There's two outside, but I don't know if they're buddy benches.
They're red, usually they're red.
Yeah, I don't think so.
They're, they're from the classes, I think.
ECC.
ECC has one.
This will be the...
So, Sergeant, I think Sergeant does.
Yeah. We could find out and talk to them about that. I think, um, one of my first meetings on the board, uh, two thousand and fourteen, they came, made a presentation. I thought it was a very moving presentation.
Yep.
Um, okay, so, motion by Mr. Gross, seconded by Ms. Maybly. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, five oh.
The second donation is two thousand six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents from the North Andover Foundation for Education, which was used to support the model classroom. So, if you remember, last year, we did a online platform through the North Andover Foundation for Education, and this is the amount of money that came in through that, and they are donating it to the Model Classroom Initiative to help offset the costs. It was a joint effort with the PTOs and the, and the PACs.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept this donation?
So, moved. And seconded.
Motion by Mr. Limpert, seconded by Mr. Gross, to accept, uh, the donation of two thousand six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents from the North Andover Education, uh, Foundation for Education. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do, do we know where that would be used, or is that just in the...
Yeah, so, at this point, the money that we're getting now is going to go towards next year's installations, um, which are going to be a little bit more heavily at the high school and the middle school, where we struggle, frankly, to get, uh, the funding. So, that's really where the good chunk of our funds from the district have gone. And this will be used to sub, to understand, to help that.
And will this, um, donation button in the North Andover Foundation for Education still be open for this year as well? Toward this, or are they putting something new, do you know?
I do not know, but I can find out.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on quickly, chair's report. Um, just a housekeeping detail first. In new business, um, letter E, the first reading request to spend rules, we're going to withdraw that item from today's agenda, so, we're not going to take that up.
May I just make one quick comment about that?
Sure.
I, um, I had to ask, uh, Mr. Tracy to put that on the agenda, because, uh, there was a request by the Town Planning Department for a letter of support for the, it's called the Multi-Use Trail. It's a trail that runs from, uh, think of it, Stachis to Wire Hill, that goes behind the high school. And we had given him a letter of support two years ago, when they submitted a request for CPA funds at the town meeting. The project is finally, uh, moving ahead now, and they're going to be doing some more work on that. And they were thinking about requesting more funds from CPA, but they decided to rethink that before they move forward, so they don't need the letter of support at this time. But, the good news is, the trail development activity is moving forward, and at some point, we'll have a nice trail that will take a lot of our students, actually, from the high school to Stachis, to get pieces. So, they will be walking through the muck, they'll be walking on a nice improved trail, so it'll be good.
Terry will be happy.
Um, and then, lastly, uh, for the chair's report, I want to just, uh, let the, the committee know and the public know. Uh, last night, the, the finance committee, they adopted the Town Manager's FY eighteen Capital Improvement Plan, which we all know includes our classroom reduction plan. So, that makes our committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the FinCom all unanimously supporting it. So, I look forward to going to town meeting with that kind of strength behind it. Um, they also approved, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee budget last night. So, we will have a consensus budget, I think, Mr. Mailer, yeah, five years in a row. That's fantastic, that's just, um, a lot of good teamwork.
Yes, it is.
That's between you and the Town Manager, Dr. Price, so...
He's amazing.
And you're okay.
Yeah, and you're okay too, is that what he said? Yeah, yeah.
He's still amazing.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, superintendent's report, two quick things I have here on the update on the Cambridge Institute. So after our meeting last time where Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Millie talked about the Cambridge Institute and that relationship, and then we had a snow day challenge where students wrote to our sister school in China, and we're collecting those to send those abroad. I tried to look into what we really need to do about the Cambridge Institute and made the decision to have Suzanne Egan take a look at the contracts now that we have a town attorney. So she looked at that, she had a few changes that she's working with the Cambridge Institute legal side on, that were around kind of this automatic renewal component, we thought. So we've had attorneys review it, it wasn't ready for primetime tonight, but I was thinking I'd bring it back at the next one. I think we should vote it, I think, you know, the question is, should we vote it, should we not vote it? But I think the school committee, you voted it the first time, let's do it again, and just kind of keep that. I think it's good for us to review it every year anyways, because it is a financial arrangement we have with them. So Suzanne's reviewed it, I'll get it out to you, and we'll vote it at our next school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, so, and then the next is, Mr. Tracy and I were just talking, and this is really for the public and for some of you here, I know there have been a lot of snow days. And one of the things we talked about, and I actually just did a journal segment with North Andover CAM about this, is like, what does it take for me to make a decision? Like, I promise it's not that I look out the window and just decide. So I just thought I'd run through this morning, so you can kind of hear what a typical day is. And although it was less typical today because I didn't call Mr. Gilligan and make him go outside and look outside this morning, most mornings I do.
Is that because you know?
No, it's because I'm thirty-three miles away, so, so, you know, I wake up about 4:30 in the morning on a day that there's potentially any issues around snow. The day that there was the ice last week, I was awoken at 5:42 by the superintendent in Andover, because none of us saw that coming. So if you know it's coming, you set your alarm for 4:30 in the morning, but sometimes you don't know it's coming. This morning I woke up at 4:30, 4:45, and then you start a whole series of things. I've become an expert on weather underground, so if anyone wants to know what I look at, you know, I got a doctorate in education to be a.
Not the political activist group.
No, 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 don't worry, I've got a doctorate in education, so I can refresh weather underground on my computer all the time. And then, so you try to do that, there's also some really good radars out there. But then you call the DPW, I mean, that's actually this morning, the call was really the DPWs. If it's one of those snow calls like last Tuesday where it hadn't started yet, that call's mine. But when the call is already happened and the snow is on the ground, it's really up to the DPW about whether they think they can have their roads ready. You also call the custodians, this morning I called Mr. Mullin and got him out of bed at like 5:01, and whether the custodians can have the sidewalks around the schools salted and ready for the kids. And he felt like they needed more time, so did the DPW. And then I also have a conversation with our bus company, Stephanie and our bus company, and I have become quite good friends at 4:45 or 5 o'clock in the morning. And I have conversations about whether or not she thinks she can get the buses started, cleaned off, and how the roads look to her. Then a series of text messages, which I'm happy to share with you of neighboring superintendents, where we all kind of say, what are you going to do, what are you going to do, what are you going to do? And it's kind of like a game of chicken, like who's going to say they're going to go one way or go the other? And then this morning, it was quite funny, I'm getting a little bit better at this, I called John Lavin, who's the guy from the DPW, an amazing, he's just great. And I said, all right, look, they're all saying they're going to open, but I know they're not going to open, so give it ten minutes, I'll call you back. Because they all then started talking to their DPWs, realizing there was a lot more snow on the ground than anyone anticipated, and that they weren't ahead of it. So slowly, Andover decided to not have, to do a delay, Methuen decided to do a delay, Haverhill decided to do a delay. So finally you get to the point where everyone kind of works together. One of the rules that I have learned is, you think of a donut, you never want to be the hole in the middle of that donut, where everyone around you has done something and you have done something different. So you're always, what are the surrounding communities doing? Then, and then we start the process of informing people. So I put it out on Twitter as quickly as I can, so there's lots of people who are looking at my Twitter account early in the morning, and I think that's helpful for parents if they, you know, if you, I do it as quickly as I can. Sometimes that's four something, sometimes that's five something, on the day of the snow, of the ice, it was six something, just because it came so late. And then I call Mr. Millie and Mr. Gilligan and wake them up, and they start notifying the different news outlets. And then I get on School Messenger, and in my groggy voice, try to be as engaging and as excited that I can be. I normally do two calls, and I know some of you guys might get both of those calls. One is to the staff, it's basically this morning was like, I know you're sick of hearing my voice, and I'm really sorry, I'm calling you again, but we're going to have to be late today. And with the parents and with the kids, I try to be a little bit more formal and identify who I am. And that's how we do it, and I think it's important to understand that, like, you never get it right all the time. Some people are happy with your call, some people are not happy with your call, you know, seniors are always happy if they don't go to school. Other parents are often not happy when their kids are staying at home, so you just kind of get it. But I do want to let you know, I take it very, very seriously, and obviously the thing that's most important to me is the safety of our kids and also our faculty. I think that's, we also have to remember that our faculty is driving often a long distance to work. And we have to remember, a lot of our faculty live in southern New Hampshire or on the coast, and I have to think about them being able to get to work safely. And so I just think it's important to understand that this is a serious process. I think Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Millie would say to you that it's probably the thing that stresses me out most about being superintendent of schools. I mean, I can handle almost anything else, and this just makes me stressed, because it's quick, it's very public, and you don't want to get it wrong.
And you're on an island.
Yeah, and you're by yourself, because ultimately you're the one making the calls. And I drive into town, like this morning I drove by all the schools, and there were no cars in the schools, and I'm like, that's because of me, you know? So, and it is tricky for me to do it thirty-three miles away, and that's why often Mr. Gilligan has to go outside. Is it really snowing up there, Mr. Gilligan?
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that explanation, it's good, don't want to be the hole, I want to be the donut.
You don't want to be the, you don't want to be the hole in the middle of the donut.
Okay, good, anything else on your report?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, great, budgets, that's report, you going to come join us now, Mr. Mailer, you going to?
I'm going to come over here.
Okay.
Okay, so it really hasn't changed, we're kind of in a lull regarding any additions to our special education unanticipated costs. If you recall from December's report, we were at 165.4, and we were still there as far as what we think we need to access the stabilization fund for this year. So that hasn't changed, we do have some students that might have to go for forty-five day placements coming up, but we'll monitor it and add it if we need to. But that's where we are right now regarding the stabilization fund. And then I looked at, coincidentally, the report we did at this time last year was on January 25th, and we were at forty-seven point two eight percent of our spend rate, and we're at forty-seven point one eight right now. So right where we were last year. So continuing pretty much the way it's been going this year.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, so at the finance committee last night, the subject came up about the $165,000, the hundred thousand and sixty-five thousand. And could you just explain the hundred thousand dollar decrement from?
From circuit breaker.
From circuit breaker.
Correct, right, so the last few years, they have been consistently reimbursing seventy-two percent. The maximum, the goal is to reimburse it seventy-five percent for those expenses, but it's been seventy-two. And this year it dropped down to seventy, and the impact to us from what we had projected was a hundred thousand dollars. So the quarter, we get paid quarterly, and the quarterly payments are twenty-five thousand less than we projected.
So that's exactly what I said.
Oh, good job.
And somebody said, I don't think that's right, I really do think that's the right answer.
It was correct.
So I just wanted to confirm that I said the right thing.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Limpert.
Quick question?
Sure, Mr. Gross.
So can we get a copy, and do we expect any, any snow removal expenses, or are we not at that point, we got to shovel roofs yet?
Sorry, I was concentrating on your first remark, because I'm pretty sure.
We, it's connect, it's, we didn't give you a hard copy, but we do, we did, it's connected to the agenda.
Thank you.
Yep, and so what was the second part?
The second question is, do we expect any, any snow removal expenses for roofs, or are we not yet at that point we have to worry?
Over time?
No, no, roofs, I mean, we've got a vacation week coming up too.
And a warm weekend, so.
So if we needed to, right, exactly, we're not anticipating those additional expenses at this time.
Good.
Knock on wood.
Something.
And the town announced last night that it's only $300,000 over so far.
Yeah, well, and it's still winter.
The day is young.
And have the questions on the budget? No, thank you. Okay, now moving on to new business, before we get to, the first order of business is textile recycling at Atkinson. I am going to recuse myself from this, this conversation. I represent the company that is doing the curbside textile recycling, and I don't think there's a direct competition, but just for the sake of appearances, I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to pass the gavel to the senior member, Mr. Limpert, and then you can let me know when you guys are done discussing it, thank you.
We will do that.
So when someone recuses himself, they actually have to leave the room, so, just so we're clear on that.
Put in your earphones.
Yeah, it's the appropriate thing to do under ethics laws.
Cool.
So this is the, the. Consider, this is the first reading of this initiative, and this was, my understanding is this was initiated here at Atkinson. But there's a good prospect that at some point if this seems useful and successful, that this would probably end up being a district-wide.
It's actually the, all the PTOs want to do it, just Atkinson is representing.
Taking the lead.
Right, so it's all of them.
Do you want to, Ms. Mabley, you want to give us a little background on how we got to this point, are you familiar with?
I am, I am, so at the PTO president's meetings, the PTO co-presidents from Atkinson, Elisa's here representing the team there, brought this proposal, and all the PTO presidents discussed it, and are interested in pursuing having this program on the campuses or on the, I guess I call it a campus, but on the school grounds of all the different schools to then raise money for each of the PTOs individually to add to their budgets. And so we thought it would make sense to have the presentation here, so we fell here.
Great, so just tell us your names and just give us your.
Elisa Goldberg, I'm the Atkinson co-president. And so I brought this up, I had spoken with Kathryn Larson at Bay State Textiles, she reached out to me. And what our initial thought is and how we see this is, especially around having to raise money for technology, this is a very easy way to bring in funds for the PTO. The box, each box would be set up at each school location for parents, families to drop off any of their donations, like you would at a Planet Aid box or anything like that. What Bay State Textiles does, and Kathryn can speak more about that, but it's a larger variety of things that you can drop in this box. Each box would have, what the PTO presidents discussed was, each box can put that Raze, North Andover Raze logo on it. So it's a very community-oriented image, but yet each box would be designated, when the stuff is weighed, each box would be designated for the, each PTO. So just a really quick, easy way for us to receive a donation, and also a very easy way for families to donate who might not be able to give cash to the PTOs. It also adds to what all of the PTOs are doing as far as that recycling of the food, the reuse snacks, and even just the trash and things that they're doing within the school, it broadens out a little bit. Bringing in your clothing, your textiles, your shoes, things like that, so it kind of adds that, that food rescue. And again, an easy way, you have your bag in the car already, driving around to give to the MSPCA, to give to the dump or wherever, it's all, all in one place and very manageable. So I hope Kathryn can kind of talk about some of the details.
All right. So I just have a couple folders here for the co-chair, and maybe one here, a couple trifolds for the rest of the committee. I think you have this electronic mail, so.
Yeah, this I know we have.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll start out, my name's Kathryn Larson, I'm the recycling development coordinator with Bay State Textiles. The school box program was developed in the spring of 2012 by my boss, Paul Curry. He got together with the Mass DEP, they had done a solid waste study on the problem of unwanted textiles. In Massachusetts alone, there's 520 million pounds of textiles that end up in our waste stream, of which ninety-five percent can be recycled. So by partnering with the schools, it's a way to educate on the problem of unwanted textiles, as well as spread awareness to acceptable items. The old rule of thinking was, everything had to have its buttons and zippers and all of that, whereas we take it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And then again, generating revenue for the schools. Since then, the program's grown, we're in over sixty school districts in eastern Mass. Locally here, we're up in Lowell, we're in Methuen, Beverly, Peabody, Reading, Wakefield, Melrose. Melrose has had the program, in April, they're coming up on four years, they've generated close to eighteen thousand dollars for their PTO, and that's district-wide. So it's not a get-rich-quick program, but it's an ongoing continual stream of revenue for the schools and the PTO community. So it's pretty simple in the sense that the boxes are cross-branded for the district, she mentioned the logo, and they're placed outside of each school. The driver has a handle with a scale, pulls up to the box, weighs the product. We send a rebate check monthly, so it can go to the individual PTOs. At the high school, you know, it can go to boosters. It has some educational benefits as well, I heard mention of DECA, one of the districts brought it into the DECA classroom as a real-world business plan. So the DECA students worked on marketing and promoting the program. You know, there's also the environmental aspect to it. So, you know, it takes a few months to spread awareness, but once it's up and going, it runs itself.
Questions, Mr. Gross? So this, you're not a five oh three?
No, we're for-profit, correct.
And is there any way for the contributors to receive recognition for their donations?
I can't speak for that, it's my understanding, I've heard, again, I, you know, I can't say definitely, but I have heard that where it's the PTO is the, is the nonprofit, that's the beneficiary.
Right.
I believe they can provide something in regards to the tax.
Okay, and with regards to the maintenance of the boxes, is this something that you're on demand for, or do you do regular routes?
So we do pickups weekly. You know, we don't live in a perfect world, if the box overflows, I just ask that you, you know, you call, and we'll have somebody out here to pick it up. You know, if we're coming to a school every Monday and every Tuesday the box is full, then that means we need to add a box, you know, and that's bittersweet, the program's working, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
So the only, not necessarily a question for you, but I know that, and I can't remember exactly when, I'm going to say probably about eight, nine months ago, the board of selectmen and the town manager were looking into curbside recycling. And so I know at one point when I spoke to Mr. Mailer that I think we needed to have more communities in order to actually kick that program off, and that's why we hadn't started it. So I think that we need to do a little bit of understanding where the town is from that perspective.
It's my understanding that there's no, that it's not limited to just the curbside or the, you know, having one program.
Right.
You know, you can have both programs, there's some benefits to, you know, to the box program, there's some bullets in the folder that talks about the difference, you know.
Yep, I saw it.
Concerns that come up with curbside, I mean, as it is, you know, trash day, you get your pickers, your scrappers, you put a commodity like textiles out on the side, you know, out in front of your house, you're welcoming theft into your community. You know, there's a value there, so we're, you know, providing a box where somebody can go and be anonymous and put their donations in.
But I would liken it, Mr. McDebbett, to, you know, like bottled rices and can pickup, where you can either put it in your recycling bin, or you can take it.
Bring it to the boy scouts.
Boy scouts or something, yeah, so similar kind of situation.
And one of the things that's nice is, you are still putting in, you can put in towels and sheets and maybe clothes that are ripped that you wouldn't necessarily donate to someone, and they're using those, they're turning around. And where they're for-profit is, they're turning that into stuffing for car seats and things, it's just not going, so it really was kind of intriguing to me, because that's things that we can teach these kids with the Raze and all that.
No, no, I get all of that, I just, I'm thinking about, you know, if we're doing this and the town is trying to kick off another program at the same time, I mean, I think we should at least understand the town's direction, too.
And keep in mind, it's my understanding, the curbside, I mean, there's a much less rebate to the town, you know, whereas with the rebate for the school box, a hundred dollars a ton versus, I believe it's twenty a ton.
Okay.
So you're giving your residents an option where to put their unwanted textile. There's so much out there, you know, the average person discards eighty-one pounds a year, in a town like North Andover, that's, you know, eleven, over eleven hundred fifty tons of textiles. You're never going to collect all that, but even just a percentage of it, you know, and so.
If we got rid of, I noticed that you guys take stuffed animals, but if we got rid of my daughters, I think we could have funded.
That's a tough one.
They call the room in your house.
Yeah, no, I think some poor kids lose their stuffed animals for us, but that is, you know, we do take it all, and there's a healthy demand globally for used clothing, you know. With my number on the website, I get calls from, you know, last week Bolivia, Saskatchewan, Chile, they want our, we have customers all around the world. So about forty-five percent is reused as clothing, shoes, pocketbooks, so it's creating jobs in the global economy, we're tailoring. What can't be reused is broken down into different grades, thirty percent the wiping grade for rags and factory industrial use, twenty percent the fiber grade for carpet padding, insulation and the such. And as she mentioned, Elisa mentioned, you know, the stuffing from the stuffed animals could end up in the car seats of our cars. Our cars have about fifty pounds of recycled textiles. So there's a need for the product in other industries, so.
Thank you. I know a lot about this, I was at the other meetings before. My one question is not really for Kathryn, but for the PTOs to think about, I mean, the next step, I guess, if everybody agrees, is to then talk to the different schools.
Right.
And supposing a couple of the schools don't have the physical space to put the boxes, is there a way that you can come up with to have them still somehow participate?
So.
And benefit financially.
Typically what happens is I get together with the facilities manager, we go around each school, determine a location that's convenient for the community, not in the flow of school traffic, and we try to stay away from dumpsters. I have boxes at Boston Public Schools that have no space, and we were able to make something happen. If a school doesn't have space, you know, we can look at alternatives, I mean, for instance, in Abington, one of the schools has the box at the administrative building. Or maybe put it at a neighboring school, get a little, I can have a little bumper sticker made that, you know, identifies that school to this school, we can make that work.
But to find some way, because I, there is a chance, I can think of a couple of places where there might be issue of space.
And that's what we were talking about before, about over here, because you do have the ECC in Atkinson, so close, how do you choose? We can find a spot where we do put two, because you have so many people, you would require two.
Benefit that, right.
And then using that bumper sticker to say, this is for the ECC and this is for Atkinson, and people can make that choice where they're donating.
Is there, aren't there something along the fence, I feel like there is a drop off.
There's something at the church next to Atkinson.
Oh, at the church.
That I know, but I was thinking there was something along that back fence.
We have our trash dumpsters.
Are the dumpsters?
Not, not anything other than our, the trash.
Okay, all right.
One question for me, if I could, what's the relationship with the schools, is it contracted service, who's responsible for fire and theft and vandalism, how does that work?
So we do have a facilitator's agreement, if that's something you want to take a look at, it's not required, our, you know, kind of slogan was no cost, no contract. Probably a handful of the districts out of sixty have an agreement, all the boxes are insured, you know, they're maintained, we haven't had any issues with theft. I give my boss a lot of credit, I think he was smart with his business model, working with the schools, people tend to respect the boxes on the schools. You know, we want to be a community partner, we don't just want to be that random box on the side of the road.
Right, right.
You know, so if there's anything left next to the box or in the box that's not textiles, we take it, you know, and we have close to, I think, five hundred boxes out there. And if we were dumping everybody else's trash, we wouldn't stay in business, so.
So but my understanding is, you're asking the school committee to approve you to enter into the PTOs and PTAs without a contract, that's, is that the model we're going toward?
With the district-wide program.
Okay.
The facilitator's agreement would be up to you folks if you'd like to have that.
I'm not sure what the proposal is, but I'm just curious about the, the relationship.
No, it was really, this was an opportunity just to understand what it was, and the reason that we brought it to the school committee was that these boxes would be on our property, and our property.
Right, right.
I, our vision here is that they would be in agreement with the PTOs, but it's going to be something outside of our schools, and it was important for the school committee to weigh in on that.
Okay, so the model is though, that if we do bring this up, it's not a contracted relationship, it's, it's no cost, no contract, no.
Right.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
And to that point, you know, as someone who's worked with the PTOs for years, finding a way to raise money without having to do anything is very attractive. So, and, and, you know, you try, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but if you don't try it, you never get a chance to get free money, so.
And especially looking at the schools and having that opportunity for families to donate that couldn't write a check or.
Right, that's, I'd never thought about that, it's a very, very good point. Right, that's, I'd never thought about that, it's a very, very good point.
I can tell you, I know, we've driven around in the back of the car with bags for weeks and driven past them and not even just stopped.
Because you know you've seen that box when you have nothing in your car, but then you go looking for it, you don't remember where it's at.
Yeah, where was that again? So, I like this program, you know, I'm not saying, you know, it's, I'm not in favor of it, I just wanna understand a little bit where we are from a town perspective. The other question that I have, and I think I have seen this again at the church and then at Saint Michael's, but they have, I think they've got books, or some version of that, where they do that for books as well, and I'm just curious if you've looked into that.
Franklin has that, I saw that the other day, yeah. I was just, we were there yesterday. Either they have either that or they have another donate something box.
Okay. I was just curious if you've looked into that as well.
Looked into that, as far as like where there are your boxes there?
I mean, it's very similar to this program, I'm sure it's a fundraising from a paper.
You know, Catherine approached me, and again, as a parent, when, you know, all the clothes and the textiles and the stuffed animals came up, I didn't really even think about the CDs and books, because we do, I mean, I bring mine to the library, or you pass them on to some, another family. So, for me, this was more, this jumped out right away because of what it was, that we could certainly look at.
The sheets and towel log?
The sheets and towels. I already have stuff in my attic waiting to go on.
Ours is waiting for the fifth grade drop-off day, so.
So, let me just summarize, it sounds like at least we need to do some coordination with the town, just to make sure we're kind of on the same page. Dr. Price, could you or Mr. Mealy or somebody, since you're interacting with them all the time, just see what they're doing?
We can do that.
And what's up?
Did you have a question?
I do have a question. On the box, the bottom there, it looks like has a logo of a video camera?
Mm-hmm.
Is that on all the boxes?
The logo?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we don't have video cameras, and we can't, we can't indicate or make people think, or allow them to think that there is a video camera when there isn't.
Sure, we can put a different logo on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yes, we can absolutely do that, Mr. Gross.
The other issue is, Mr. Gross, would you, should we look at the facilitator's agreement? What do you think?
I would defer to our executive team and determine if there's a need to have that reviewed by council.
I can have council look at it, if you could send us a copy, and then we can just decide. We'll, I would follow the recommendation of Suzanne Egan about whether we should do or not.
My only concern is that the placement with vandalism creates a fire hazard that creates damage to the building, and if we can't find a place, a way that that would, you know, not cause harm, then it might be necessary to come into some relationship.
Okay, I'll ask her.
That's the only surface concern. Thank you.
So, our next thought would be to have Catherine and PTO presidents walk through with the principal or janitor, kind of see a location, is there someone else we should be including in that when you talk about?
So I would think, Mr. Mealy.
Okay.
But the, would a wait, are?
Yeah, you should wait one week.
One more week.
One media wait.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
I think our next one is the week after vacation.
March ninth.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
We'll summon Mr. Tracy.
I think Mr. Mealy wants to go with Mr. Tracy.
Yes.
Careful.
He's vanished to the.
Someone's gonna get him now.
Somebody gonna get it?
Jim did.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's gonna be a minute.
Okay. Take a break, let's see.
Okay, I think we should do Quebec first, because Chris is here.
Chris, why don't you come up, because we're gonna do Quebec first? I'm with Pablo.
Okay, Pablo.
One of the students in the class that wants to go.
Okay, good enough. Is it okay if we do Quebec first, because Chris is here?
Okay, I'm back.
We missed you.
Lovely conversation with Mrs. Reivenberg. How's it, just, anybody kids in class there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we are going to move to item C, that you said?
Yeah, if we could just Quebec first.
Quebec first, okay. So, first reading, request to suspend rules to approve high school overnight trip to Quebec.
Yes, so I invite, I would like Chris Carroll, our teacher at the high school, to talk a little about this. I just wanna frame it a little bit, and then feel free to jump in. We would, are voting to suspend the rules just because it's coming up so quickly. This is a trip, and I'm sure you'll tell us, that it was originally to Paris, to France, and then it was a trip up to Quebec with a bigger group, and now it's a trip up to Quebec with a smaller group. So this is not through lack of desire or effort, in fact, Ms. Carroll has done an incredible amount to try to get her kids up to Quebec. The one issue that I have that we've been working very carefully on, and I just wanna explain to the committee, when I arrived, I was concerned that we were not as thoughtful about what bus companies we were contracting with. And I will tell you very forward, I come from Newton where there was a massive bus tragedy, and so I'm very anxious about this issue, and probably overly sensitive, but I just wanted my baggage on that. So what we have done is, Lucy McCarthy has used a service where you can actually go and look at the different bus companies to ensure that they have met the federal state safety regulations, and each company actually is rated. And if they don't pass the rating, we have not allowed them to be used. And sometimes that means increased cost. So in here, because the companies are often, if they're not as highly rated, they can often get them cheaper, but I just feel very strongly that we wanna make sure our kids are traveling on safe buses, so.
They're taking a train this time.
Well, this keeps changing, so that's why I wanna say that we've had some changes about this, and you can discuss this, but what, one of the iterations of this is we were gonna take a Greyhound bus. Interestingly enough, Greyhound is, does not meet the federal safety regulations.
Good to know.
And, and, you know, again, that's interesting. The other issue with a Greyhound bus and not a chartered bus is kids are sitting next to somebody that may or may not be quarried. That's no different than on an airplane, so I wanna be straightforward with that, but Greyhound currently has some concerns that do not have it pass muster. It's different than it's Greyhound than, you know, a bus that you rent from somebody that you don't know. So, this is just an important part of how this is, has developed. I think we've solved the problem, but you're gonna see some changes in transportation as a result of my concerns. Is that fair to set that up?
With the background, I get it now.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you want me to tell you about the bus?
Yeah, so talk about the trip, and then.
I don't know if you have access, I don't know how.
We have the form.
We have that, yeah.
Okay. There is an email about the bus company. I had organized as efficiently as I could, I've been doing this since two thousand and four with students, organizing trips to France, making all the reservations and organizing all the trips and everything myself. So I've done it outside the country for a long time, I figured it saves money that way, you pay people to do that, then it becomes less accessible. And one day, I had given up, actually, this year, on taking anybody to France, and then I tried, just like the superintendent said, to take them to Quebec City, but it was too pricey for half my kids. And three weeks ago, one of the girls in my class just looked up at me and said, Madame, will you take us to Montreal? And I said, yes, I certainly will. So, as things have turned out, I had everything organized, I cut costs, because half the kids in class, including Pablo, work after school, and they work like five hours a night, and they really don't have a lot of money. So I had the trip all organized for five hundred bucks with Greyhound, and then there came in the new best things, and I thought, oh my God, because it was three, it was, cost three times Greyhound to go with some of these companies. But then, Lucy McCarthy sent me another link, and come to find out, this company actually plans your trip for you, and has a bus, will hire a bus company that will attend to safety more so than Greyhound would. I have an email here, do you have it?
I do. So the buses that they contract with are all on the approved list. We just found that out today.
Okay. Can Pablo speak for us, though?
Absolutely.
Yeah, of course.
I just came with Madame Carroll today to make an appeal to the members of the board in favor of letting us go on this trip in the most affordable way possible, because I know that if, if the case were otherwise, I wouldn't be able to go on this trip, which is real funny, but I think it's important, not only is our, not only in our development as French speakers and listeners, obviously going to a French-speaking province, but really in our development as like tolerant and globalized individuals, being able to immerse yourself in a different culture and meet new people really broadens your horizons and makes you, I think, a better global citizen.
Amen.
Absolutely.
And one more thing, the camaraderie in this group, because it's a small language program, the kids travel together for years and years and years, camaraderie's always awesome in AP, and this'll be a wonderful thing before the AP exam, in terms of the exam, but it's also a wonderful carrot at the end of a long road, with kids who have worked extremely hard and are relatively proficient and definitely have a work ethic that is not to be sniffed at, so. I'm thrilled to take them up there, and this company takes all the work away from me, so.
What's the cost with this company?
The cost is six hundred, and it was says, it says here, six twenty-nine, but on the other, on the other, they said six seventy-four, when all was said and done, per person. So we are, I just copied off Live Your Learning applications for everybody who needed one, and we're planning two fundraisers in addition to take the edge off, but it's kinda cool, because most kids are paying for their own way, so.
I do appreciate your patience with all of this, but when we looked up Greyhound and realized it was, I just.
I didn't know the background until Deb Holman came up this morning, said, I need to tell you a sad story, and I remember hearing about that in the news, and I thought, oh, I get it.
So, and we both come from there, so it's, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Don't need to apologize for that.
So, can you tell me a little about what, so Monday's a travel day, Friday's a travel day?
Actually, the way, hold on, because I had planned it one way, and it's gonna hopefully happen a different way. The twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, so we would leave on the twenty-fourth, which is a Friday, I think, and we'd be back Sunday night awfully late. And it looks like almost every single person in the class is going, with one exception. And then I have two other students who completed AP last year, who have expressed interest in participating as well.
So the plan is return the twenty-sixth, not the twenty-seventh?
That's correct.
So you're leaving us in Monday at school?
Yeah.
Okay, and can you tell me what the urgency is for this weekend?
It's the only weekend we could get everybody on the same page.
Everyone in terms of the students?
In terms of my class.
I see, okay. And have we ever used the service before in Quebec?
No, I don't know why Lucy sent it to me.
So we got the information actually from Newton, because they've been helping us with all of this, and this is a service they've used before to have kids travel to Canada, and they came highly recommended.
Okay. And do all the students have passports?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have the copies of them in my hand yet, I'd have to get the trip approved first, and then they'll come on in.
Well, I mean, I'm a full supporter of, you know, cultural exchange, I think it's great, my student, my kids have had that experience. I'm just a little concerned of the fuzziness of the details and the urgency of approval without really getting the full understanding, so I'll just put that on the table.
I think part of the urgency is, we're not gonna meet again till March ninth.
I understand, but this could be an April trip, or it could be a May trip.
I think Ms. Carroll just said that this is the weekend that would work for your entire class?
Yeah, we tried every single weekend from, from the end of February till the end of the, of May, so. We could do it after the exam, perhaps, in May, but before the exam would be vastly preferable.
Could be ideal, I understand.
The guides will be in French, the kids are gonna speak French on the bus. The experience will be all a French-speaking experience. And yes, you know, I mean, it seems as if it's grasping a teeny bit, but these opportunities, and I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sure, these opportunities are the pinnacle and part of the, the oil for the machine in a language program, and we can't offer anybody a huge trip this year, it just didn't work out because of terrorism. And I, you know, I have a great, we have a great French program, and I don't want the momentum to, to just grind to a halt in any way, so I'm, you know, this was an organic experience, when little Jenny looked up at me and said, Madame, est-ce que vous pouvez nous apporter au Canada? And I was like, really? And I looked at every single face, I said, do you all wanna go? Really? Oh my God! And so that, it just, it was an organic experience, and it was a teachable moment, and I'm hoping that you will assist us and.
And I mean, I can say I've had more input on this trip than I've had on any other trip that we have approved, and, you know, I have been getting the communications from the organization that we, you would be going with, and I have recommendations that, and the reason it is so last-minute, Mr. Gross, is really because of the bus situation, so, you know, we're not gonna let these guys go without the normal protocols and procedures that we put into place for this.
So, okay, I understand. I'm a little confused, though, because it says you're taking the train from South Station.
Right, so this is when we did this, so I, I'm trying to, so, I understand, but literally we got confirmation about an hour ago that the buses that we were looking into.
We're not gonna do that, that trip was my plan.
I get it, so the real plan, the real plan is the buses are coming to pick up the students at the high school?
At the high school, yeah.
I see, and they'll return them to the high school?
That's right. Correct. On buses that we are, meet the safety standards that we are looking to have.
And that doesn't change the itinerary?
The itinerary includes, the lot is similar, but they're actually gonna do a lot more stuff, and solve a lot of problems that I would've had otherwise. We're going to the World Trade Center, we're going to the huge market, Plaisse Jacques Cartier, Old Montreal, which is, was part of the, we're going to the fur trade interpretation center, we're going to eat at Sugar Chat, La Chine is a village, it's a Quebecois village we're going to, and then we get to go to the Biédom on our way out of town, which is kind of a neat experience. And none of those, some of those things, I was really grasping at straws to try and figure out how to get twenty kids from Old Montreal to the Sugar Shack and back, and to the bus, and so this company kinda draws it all together and lets them actually access more things for about a hundred bucks more than I was gonna charge them. Did I just answer your question, or did I go off topic?
No, no, that's very helpful.
I can, I can, I fully can appreciate Mr. Gross's comments, I think, you know, I prefer to have it all nice and neat and clean and everything going, but I understand from talking to Dr. Price, and maybe I've heard a little bit because of my conversations with Dr. Price about it, that she's on top of this, and she feels, you know, very comfortable in doing so. I would ask, if we do approve this, that in the next couple days, can we get this email to us, all up to date?
Yes.
With the, the date, where you're leaving from, when you're getting back? Because I think it's basically on point, except for a couple.
I have it right here, you want me to just send it to somebody? If nobody has it yet?
That would be helpful. My point, though, is when we do waive the rules, we sometimes get surprised, and I'll be quite honest with you, I'm in full support of the visit, but I'm not in full support And um, I'll be quite honest with you, I'm in full support of the visit, but I'm not in full support of waiving rules tonight, but.
Well, I think, okay, that's fine. Um, I just think that if we don't waive the rules tonight, that we're not gonna be able to to uh to get this done. So, um, I'll open it to the committee and then if there's any more discussion.
Make a motion to accept this trip?
Well, we need, we need, we need, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Well, suspend the rules first.
Suspend the rules first.
I'll second then.
Motion made by Ms. Mabey, seconded by Mr. Limpert to suspend the rules and uh take a final vote on this overnight trip.
We're voting whether or not to suspend the vote.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, we're just voting that we're not gonna just have one reading, okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, any discussion suspension of the rules?
No.
Seeing none, um, all of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That'd be no. Okay, uh, that motion passes four to one that we're gonna suspend the.
No, no, it's not.
There's wait, there's two votes, there's two votes. Alright, so we're gonna suspend the rules of the first reading. Uh, and now a a motion would be appropriate to approve the trip to Montreal.
So what move, what trip? Can we just at least be very clear what the trip is?
I plugged this in.
It's with, what's the travel companies, A I?
A C I S. It's Montreal by bus. I don't know who's got the.
The twenty, the twenty-fourth to the.
The twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. A C I S, Montreal by bus.
For the AP French students.
Yeah.
Four minutes.
Alright, I think Mr. McDevitt made that motion, I saw it amended.
Yes, so that is the Friday, the twenty-fourth to Sunday, the twenty-sixth, Montreal by bus with A C I S.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Limpert. Any further discussion? All of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Present.
Alright, so that's gonna be a four, zero vote with one um present.
Thank you.
Have a great time.
You're approved.
Thank you.
But please, we'll get that?
We'll get that. I'll get it right out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're off to Nature's Classroom.
Yeah, so um, i- if you remember this year, um, the students went to Nature's Classroom um in three separate waves, um, which created quite, uh, if it, this is for our um eighth graders, which was a wonderful experience. We got lots of really positive feedback from parents and students. Um, Joan did a really great survey about it. The challenge was that it basically disrupted eighth grade classes for two weeks because one team was gone, another team was gone, so all the related arts got, and so, um, we talked, uh, it was the biggest complaint from the teachers was it was basically two weeks of kids going off. And especially from the related arts teachers, it was really tricky. So, um, the school has moved mountains um to actually find three separate sites that the kids can go all on the same time. So we will send the entire eighth grade off to Freedom, New Hampshire, which is, I believe, where they went last year. To Carleton, Mass, uh, Mass, and then to Ocean Park, Maine. I'm actually gonna be the supervisor there as an administrator at a camp that I was at as a kid where my mom was the camp nurse. The exact space, how cool is that? So, um, so, uh, this is the, it's the same thing we did last year. You'll see, it was two hundred and thirty dollars. We also have parents, if they could donate for kids who can't afford to go, that worked out really well. Um, but the only real change here is that everyone's gonna be going from November first to third. The other good thing is no one's gonna miss Halloween, which was an issue last year. And, um, and, you know, basically the school will be emptied of eighth graders for those days. But I think in terms of teaching and learning and that timing, it's better for uh the school. So that's, that's really the only difference.
What, do they draw straws for the site they get to go to?
Um, I don't know, but obviously they'll be going by team.
Oh, I see.
So, um, each team will go to a different site. There is no site that can handle all of our eighth graders.
Yeah, yeah, no, interesting.
I I appreciate the the, you know, rescuing Halloween for eighth graders, but can't they go in like early October?
So the problem is to find, so, so the biggest problem is to find um us, to find three sites that were all available at the same time. Um, this is the best we can do.
Right, so maybe if we book early for the next year, we can get earlier.
And, you know, cost, it's all, it's.
I do remember people saying it was.
Little chilly, little chilly up in Ocean Park, Maine on November first. But it could be warm.
Could be, could be, but I I I just, I'm guessing you won't be at the beach, right?
This is just the first reading.
This is the first reading, so we will uh draw to accordingly, um.
Is there anything else you guys need me to give you information about or?
Just out of curiosity, is the chaperone ratio the same as high school and middle school or is there a different guideline? I think high school we do ten to one.
Yeah, I think it's ten to one, but I'll double check with Joan.
Okay, thank you.
And she is sending an administrator to each site, um, thinks it's important with that number of kids, so.
That is good.
And she's trusting me with one of those sites, which my.
Hundred and ten kids per site or something like that.
Yeah, well, yeah, maybe a hundred and forty. Um, the nurses is a, is a really significant issue, um, and we're working on it. What we've actually said to um to Nature's Classroom is that they need to provide the nurses. So that's what Joan, that was really one of the biggest issues we had last year was the nurses. So, um, she's been working really hard on that and saying, look, if we're sending this many kids, you have to contract with a, an RN and not just an EMT, which is what they were trying to do.
Okay, I'm surprised they don't do that already.
Yeah, so, well, that's what she was surprised too.
Okay, but it's also spans three states, right, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Maine, so.
Right.
Different, different standards.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Price.
Thanks.
Uh, last order of business is first reading of MSBA submission of a statement of interest for NAM's renovation.
Mr. Mable, would you like to join us here with? So, um, we're gonna try to frame this at the best of our ability. And then if you have questions or things we can't answer, we will get back to it at the next meeting. That's why it's the first reading. Let me talk a little um about the the need and and the issues and then a little bit about why we're putting this on the agenda today. Um, and I do apologize that it came out in the second version of our agenda. So as we have talked about a lot, um, are actually our a largest average class sizes in the district are at our middle school. And we are running classes, I think our average is twenty-four point six, which is about five students above the state average. So it's even more above the state average than the elementary school. Um, and, you know, as we look at trying to ish, to to tackle that issue, it is also an issue of space. There is really no space in the middle school to expand, especially as we are committed to the team structure, which I believe it's a middle school and that's very important. The team structure creates a connection, a network. That's how they can go to Nature's Classroom as a team. So, in order to do that, um, it's a significant project to try to address the overcrowding issues um at the middle school. Um, and we have talked about MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, um, and their reimbursement of cities and towns um for large renovation projects. And the way it works is if you are even considering the idea of doing a significant renovation and looking for MSBA funding, you have to submit a statement of interest. The statement of interest deadline is April seventh and you're only allowed to submit a statement of interest once a year. They open up about a six week window. If you don't get it in by April seventh, you gotta wait a whole nother year. Uh, last year, ninety-six, ninety statements of interest?
Right, and seventeen, it was less than twenty percent.
Less than twenty percent are even approved. And by approved, that means that you're appro, you are actually invited to start the eligibility process. So there is a whole, if you look on what I gave you guys, there's a whole process that you have to go through. And you're not even allowed to start the process until you you have your statement of interest approved. Even once you start the process and you start in the eligibility period, so this is on uh the Building With Us page that I shared and those of you at home can look on the link. Even when you start that process, it's, we're looking to six to seven years until you start the eligibility period till actually completing the project. We're also with a less than twenty percent of statement of interest being um accepted and concerns that there are some very significant projects on the horizon, specifically Somerville High School that many are saying is gonna be at two hundred and fifty million reimbursed at probably a seventy percent rate. Might take up a huge amount of the MSBA funding. Um, it, that might, number might go down. And so the other thing that we have heard from a number of superintendents is you gotta submit a few times before they even accept your statement of interest. So, um, you could submit two, three, four, five, six times before you can even start the process. So given all of that, um, we feel that we have an issue, we've identified the issue. We have by no means identified the solution. You don't have to identify the solution. But if, not yet, um, until they allow you to even start thinking about it. We feel that it's in the best interest of our schools um and our town to at least start the ball, the ball rolling. You wanna talk about what it means we have to take a vote and what does it really mean for the town and what we're committing to? You can see the language, that language comes right from the MSBA. Do you wanna talk about that?
Sure, what we're committing to, and this is very similar to what we did a few years ago when we did the green repair program. It's the same template that we're using um upon their advice. And basically what the town is committing to is that we've identified a problem that we need to address and we'd like to start the process of determining if it's a project that we could get um MSBA support from. One thing to add to what Jen had said was that there's no weight given to how many times you've previously submitted. So it's not like, well, this is your second time, so we add a little bit. It's, it's considered on its merits each time as if it had never been submitted before.
That's what the MSBA says. That's not the folklore by superintendents. I'm just gonna tell you that you get two different answers.
According to them, they give no weight to it.
According to superintendents, you may have to submit often. It's just how it is.
So, uh, Mr. Mable, can you tell us a little bit about the MSBA reimbursement formula that would likely apply to us?
Well, I can tell you what we qualified for last time and I wouldn't think that things have changed much. Uh, it's based on your economics and your town, um, and we were at forty percent uh when we did the green repair program. And we were probably, I think we were around that when they submitted for the high school as well, so.
High school was under the old rules, grandfather, there was sixty-three percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got, that was what we did.
Yep, so we're around the forty percent level right now.
And, and we're not the only ones who need to take a vote on this, correct?
The Board of Selectmen also has to.
So why, the reason we put it on today's agenda, um, after speaking with Town Manager Andrew Mailer on Tuesday, we started to try to back this up before April seventh with the deadline. So, um, he felt, and I agree with him, that it's pretty important for the school committee to approve this before we ask the Board of Selectmen to approve it, that this is really from us. Which means, um, he would like, uh, the meeting that we would need to get to the Board of Selectmen is on the March twentieth meeting. We don't meet until March twenty-third, so we would need, that's why we did a first reading today. Hopefully we could take a vote on March ninth, um, and then some group of us, myself and anyone else and the chair or whomever would go to the Board of Selectmen on March twentieth. And again, the language is here, and I think there's some really important parts of this, is we're not committing to anything. We are, we're not committing to doing it, we're not committing to paying for it, we're committing to say we have an issue and we wanna know, are you willing to, is this, does this rise to the level where you're willing to partner with us? But at any point, we can say, you know what, even if we become eligible, well, you know what, thank you, but no. The issue here is if we don't start now, we could just keep.
Right, and it's important to emphasize that because the MSBA is very clear, at this stage, they don't want you going out and doing too much work as far as trying to figure out what the solution is, what the cost might be. They just want you to identify the problem and that's when, and they'll determine if it's something that they wanna partner with you on.
And we feel that there's no way we could do this, come up with some interim solution ourselves.
So we've walked the building with KBNA.
Okay.
And in order to add the classrooms that we would need to 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 add an additional team in each grade, you're looking at about fourteen classrooms. To do that in any kind of cost effective way, um, without significant funds would be very difficult to do. So, um, you know, you couldn't bring in modulars, there's no way to repurpose classrooms. I mean, there's really, we, we had to take a special education program out of the building to put the French class, uh, sorry, to put the French class in that we put in seventh grade. So, um, you know, so, which has had implications. So, um, so I I would say there's just really no space.
Yeah, I recall when we were facing this issue before, we were concerned about the incremental costs by doing it this way versus the forty percent um assistance we got. I would assume that whenever we get to that point, we'll have that, we'll do that calculation to make sure, you know, with the.
Right, and at any point, you you can say, okay, well, that doesn't make sense for us.
Right.
It it was a discussion point during the green repair program because while we were getting forty percent reimbursement, the cost went up because we had to meet stretch code.
Right.
Which we wouldn't have had to if we weren't doing it through their program.
And there's also, I think, prevailing wage regulations and requirements.
Well, that applies anyway. It was mostly meeting stretch code.
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, we've talked about this, no matter if we do something to the middle school, however we do it, we have to demonstrate that we tried to go through MSBA.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because there's a possibility for reimbursement. So, um, you know, uh, and if we say, well, we've been now rejected two years in a row or, you know, we, they have accepted us, but now it's gonna go over the cost of money over time and that what they're asking us to do is gonna be more. So, I I, our feeling is we don't lose anything by at least starting the process here.
I agree. I guess just the the one thing that you've said that that doesn't make this sound too advantageous is not so much the money, but the time.
Yes.
I mean, potentially we're talking a decade.
Yes.
You know, we submit two or three times and then we wait six years if we actually get selected to go forward. And then ultimately, we may not actually, actually even get picked. We may not get any money, because then we run out of money.
To Brian's point, not only the stretch code, but when you're talking about time, you're talking about inflation over those years. So you're talking additional cost because of that as well.
Oh, that's a possibility. The the one definitive thing we know is that in order to get this in by April seventh, we need to to vote on it today. I mean, those those are the things, yeah, I know, I know. We need, we need to move it along today, um, for that sense. And whether whether we decide to go to MSBA is an entirely, entirely different question, so. Any other questions on the specifics of this?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Good for now?
It's like a no brainer, right?
So we should, we should be good.
Yeah, I think we should go forward and be told, not this year. Yes, absolutely. Your state at work.
And if we are lucky enough to be told yes this year, then we get to start a process with, you know, the MSBA who does this for a living and can support us in our efforts. I mean, so, you know, um, let's hope, you know.
Do they look at the issue itself? I mean, did?
Yes, so we are looking specifically, there's two ways to um to to go. One is, um, we're going under the core program, so that's significant renovations or construction. And it, one is um overcrowding and the other is horrible physical space, right?
Correct.
And there's a different word for it, but that's. Yeah, so, um, so I forget what the language was, but, um, we're going under the overcrowding.
Yes, 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 okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was the first reading. We'll take a vote hopefully, um, next time for that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, last item of business is public comment. Any public comment tonight? Sure, come on up. Just for the record, we can gimp up here.
Yeah, I'm off the crutches. Um, so Catherine Koch, two thirty-nine, Granville Lane. Um, first of all, thank you for having the middle school on your radar. Huge, huge, so let's um start there. Um, I have two questions. I think some of it, some of what I wrote down as notes was already being, um, has already been noted by the committee. Um, but the two questions I have, one is renovate versus build, the idea of looking at, this is huge by middle school standards. Um, it's a big, big school. So I have a question about kind of, does, if if this goes to MSBA, is this just for a renovate or is there potential to then have the conversation about, you know, what is the true educational model um at the school? And it may make sense to just keep it all in one school, but I'm wondering what the thinking is there. The other question is, what do we do in the meantime? What do we do with um the severe overcrowding and the horrible space um for the kids who, even if we, if this were to be denied MSBA funds for two years, um, the problem's not going to get any better? So is there?
So I can talk about the first, and I'll try the second. The second one I might just pass on, but no, um, so, you know, if you look at the process and and I, and we did the links. But what happens is, the first thing is they say you're eligible and then you do a whole feasibility study. So a lot of these projects think they're going this way and then go a different way. And the whole idea of the MSBA um process is that they help you walk through the feasibility, what makes the most sense. Colleagues of mine who are going through this say it's like ad nauseam a little bit, like you have to have a whole bunch of open, you know, forums and people have to come and it gets quite long. Um, but it's, the idea is that we built, we make, we do the right solution rather than kind of the first solution. And that's really the MSBA approach to all of this. So we're putting in over overcrowding, but we're not saying our solution. We're saying this is the problem.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's absolutely right.
So that's the first one. And then the second thing I would say is, you know, one of the things that I, that I do wanna say is that we have tried to, to the best of our ability to address the middle school. We did some significant work last year with getting rid of grade level and being able to um bring the language back into the sixth and seventh grade. It's by no means are we trying to ignore the reality of the middle school. I I will say that when you talk to the middle school students, um, that this kind of concept is not on their radar nearly as much. The other thing for me, um, is this is all about priorities and how we're gonna get to that. One teacher with twenty-eight or twenty-nine kids all day is very different than kids who are moving between a bunch of different teachers and, um, does that mean that the middle school is not an important thing to address? Absolutely not. But in terms of looking at the reality that we were in a year and a half ago, trying to really think about what makes sense to go at first, um, I think this move is, um, if it'd all be criticized, I think it might be criticized as, wow, this is moving very quickly. You know, you've gone from the elementary to now to the middle school. I think, uh.
I'm all for that, by the way.
It's a bold, it's a bold move to even start this process so publicly. So, I I I'm not saying, that's not a great answer, but it's us saying, as it's, it's me saying and asking for committee approval, like, we get that the middle school's not where it should be. Um, and I've said a number of times before, you know, if, if a superintendent had done this four or five, six years ago, we'd be in a very different spot now. And so we gotta start the, we gotta start the clock.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fair.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a fair.
Plant the tree.
Yeah.
Alright, well, that kinda digress, how are we, Mr. Gilligan?
Okay.
Alright, public comment, that's it, um, from the board. Mr. Gross, anything?
Uh, just again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Vaylus for allowing us into her classroom tonight and Dr. Price for orchestrating what a very enlightening uh presentation we had. Um, I I just also wanna announce that, um, I know that the elections are coming up. It is conceivable that I will not be able to make the twenty-third, um, which means that the next meeting might be my last, so.
Have the cake ready for next week? Have the cake ready for next week? Got the cake ready?
Yeah.
For, in celebration of absence or participation? And I also want to just make reference, I'm very excited and happy to see our candidates in full attendance and participation, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. McDavid, anything?
I just wanted to remind everyone, if you haven't already seen this, that for vacation week, Stevens Memorial Library is having Harry Potter Hogwarts Week. They will be showing all eight Harry Potter movies, so you can have a Harry Potter orgy if you want to do that. They're going to have a number of wonderful events, so I would suggest if anybody has children and they're looking for something to do with them, look on the Stevens Memorial Library website. They've got a bunch of fun events and movies, so there's all kinds of fun stuff to be doing next week if you're doing the station.
Yeah, 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 okay. Ms. Mabely, please say something.
Yes, I will. Dr. Price and I had the pleasure of going to the Franklin Elementary School yesterday morning and meeting with the PTO members there. And people came and asked a bunch of questions that started out with the kindergarten building, some questions that they had, either through missing the meeting or seeing parts of the meeting, what have you. And it was a great conversation. Dr. Price did an excellent job explaining a lot of what we already covered in our meetings, but also some other questions came up like the middle school, some other things, and it was a really good discussion. We had a great time. We were really grateful that the Franklin community invited us and we hope to continue these meetings with other schools and other parts of the community as well. It was great.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. We're good? Motion adjourned, Mr. Gross?
Second.
Second, Mr. McDevit, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.